Free Palestine.
Salute the flag in the state of New Mexico.
The zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. I would like to welcome members of our town administration here tonight. Our manager, Alex Brown, our attorney, Jim Reynolds, our town clerk, Alfred Sodio, acting town manager, Jackie Olaia, acting community development director, Randy Hernandez, Chief Portillo, and code enforcement officers. I also welcome all of you here tonight, and we have quite a turnout, and we're glad to see that. Good to hear and see the democratic process in motion. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anybody want to make changes to the agenda? No changes. Next is ceremonies, and there are none. Next is proclamations, and there are none. Next is council comments. First on the list tonight is Council of Prince.
No comments this evening?
Thank you, Council of Prince. Council Kano.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm having a few comments this evening. First, I want to talk about the Warming Center again, because that's my favorite subject lately. I want to thank everyone in the community. I know there's a lot of people in this room that follow this category who have provided donations, who have provided time, who have provided just support of the Warming Center. The Warming Center had a very successful first season. We ended the season, the second, the evening right before that we closed, we had sixty-seven people. That's sixty-seven people who didn't freeze to death. That's how we see it, and we're thankful for that. We're hoping to continue this warming center in the future because it was very necessary. It did help a lot of people. I've been sharing stats the last few times. We had three people get jobs and two people find housing, permanent housing. So to us, that was a win. So again, thank you to everyone who volunteered in any way to help us with that. On Saturday, May 10th, I will be having my Territorial Charter Day project. My project will be a Battle of the Badges. So the Silver City Fire Department, the Silver City Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and emergency medical services from the hospital will all be participating. It will be awareness games, and it will be on Pope Street. So there will be live music, there'll be free food, there'll be some vendors, and the EMTs, the Sheriff's Department, the police, and the fire will be participating. Awareness games, to me, means they're going to learn what it's like to be a disabled person in several different ways, and I think it's going to be really a great experience for them. It's going to be a great experience for the community, so hopefully everyone will join us there. It'll be from eleven to four, again, on Pope Street, in front of Q's and Mix, so there on the corner. I recently had the opportunity to participate in National History Day. I was a subject for one of the teams that participated. They are talking about accessibility, which made me very happy. I would suggest if the rest of the council is interested to get involved with National History Day, those kids are amazing. They ask some really good questions, things I hadn't thought about that needed to be thought about, so I would get involved if I were you guys. I also attended the Heeler Regional Town Hall, which was presented last evening by Commissioner Eddie Fuentes. Thank you to Commissioner Eddie Fuentes for doing that. He led a really good discussion. A lot of people gave input. The commissioners were listening. I'm sure they're going to take some of the things that they heard and make the hospital even better. The last two things, some of you may have noticed, I'm wearing a kidney pin. March is National Kidney Awareness Month. For those of you who don't know me personally, that's a pretty big deal for me because I am on the kidney list, the transplant list. There are several members of our community who also are, so I would encourage anyone who is interested in being an organ donor to, just type it in online, and the instructions to do that are there. Also, April is Donate Life Month, so if you're not an organ donor when you renew your driver's license, I would hope that if you are able to do that health-wise, that you would consider doing that, because it really does save lives, and it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Council of Mincomo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments myself. My wife and I attended a tour of the future Ford maker space located at 307 H College Street. Their primary focus is both technical and recreational skill building, do-it-yourself enthusiasts. They also host classes and trainings. Anybody that's interested in sharing a skill, they're more than welcome to have you guys come in and share that and learn things. Some of the things that they do there is metalworking, laser cutting, woodworking, sewing, jewelry making, and I did say observer class of welding occurring. Tours are on Saturdays at twelve P.M. I would invite the public to check that out. On April third, two thousand twenty-five, at nine A.M. in Demme, the public is invited to attend the renaming of the New Mexico State Police District Twelve Field in honor of Officer Darren Jarrett, who was killed in line of duty on February fourth, two thousand twenty-one. So if anybody is intending and supporting that community, that'd be great. Again, it's April the third, I believe that's a Thursday, at nine, at nine A.M. I've gotten a few calls regarding some flags that have been pinned upside down on houses and being flown upside down. You know, it's pretty tough when I have to explain, when I have seventh and eighth graders come up to me and ask me, what does that represent? And so I do my best to share that information with them. Those that are not aware, the practice of flying the flag upside down was used by ships that were in distress and only much later have become a symbol of political protest. I know it's your public, your First Amendment right to do things like that, but I think we need to think how we're influencing kids in general. I've also received a couple of emails regarding a department head and some of the personnel, some accusations that have, in those emails. If you're not, if you don't have the courtesy to write your name on that email, don't expect me to take the time and effort to respond to those emails or take them seriously. I would encourage you, if you have any concerns or complaints, have the courage to write your name down. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council of Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Saturday, I was really surprised and disturbed when I saw some aerial fireworks in town. It cannot be as stressed enough that things are really dry and are going to get drier as summer approaches. Please be careful with fire, and I would also remind people that Silver City is in stage one fire restrictions as of March twelfth. This means no campfires and no open burning of yardways. Let's, let's keep Silver City safe and be careful with fire, and please refrain from lighting, igniting fireworks.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting of March the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council of Prince.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of our regular meeting of March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second? Council Snyder.
I second.
Give a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the list is public input. I want to make a few comments before we start. Please turn in your written comments to our clerk, Alfred Sodio, after the meeting so he can include them in a minutes. By, by city and council resolution, the maximum time for public input is five minutes. However, there's a rider on that, and it says that each person can only speak to the same topic one time. Now, we have a lot of people who have gone to a lot of trouble to be here tonight, and I know you want to speak on a topic you've spoken on before, so I'm going to give you the opportunity to do that, but we're going to limit you to three minutes. So you already know what you want to say, so say it as concise as you can. However, I know we have some other people here tonight who want to speak on another topic, and I will give you the five minutes. Now, the resolution gives the mayor the latitude to make these adjustments. So first on the list tonight is Chief Freddie Portillo.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm here to speak about NOI one three three five Community Advisory Board. I'd like to start off by reading our mission statement. The mission of the Silver City Police Department is to provide services with integrity and dedication to preserve life, to enforce the law, to work in partnership with the community, to enhance the quality of life in the town of Silver City. I believe we're already striving to work in partnership with everyone in the community to come up with solutions to overcome challenges that our community faces. Now, are there areas that we can all improve on? Absolutely. I have met with several citizens, and many of them are in the crowd today, who have great ideas and want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. I've had a personal experience where a family member of mine has been a victim of a violent crime, revictimized, and the justice system has failed her more than once. Now, we can talk about the justice system for hours, but quite frankly, this isn't the time or the place. However, as a citizen of Silver City, a law enforcement officer, and a brother to the victim, you can imagine how frustrated my family and I were and still are. We should all focus on working together to foster change and help the community at large and victims of senseless crimes feel protected. We have worked so hard to get away from the us versus them concept and take steps forward towards building stronger relations and community policing. Council Snyder and Council Prince, as I understand, you are both big advocates for an advisory board, and you have been for quite some time now. While I believe the continued efforts of an advisory board has only hindered our ability to move forward in the right direction, not to mention, in my opinion, it is creating division, tension, and fear in our community. I have met with members of the committee several times over the last several years. Every time I ask the question, what are you experiencing or seeing out there that I might be missing, that an oversight or an advisory board is needed? There have been no facts to support or justify the need for an advisory board, rather reopening wounds that affect families, police officers, and close friends by speaking about an incident that occurred in two thousand sixteen and that we have taken accountability for. What's even more disheartening is when we are willing to compromise, keep an open mind, and work together. Only to hear from my officers who have recently attended meetings with this group to come back and report that this group has made it very clear, it's an ordinance or nothing. In our last work session, I spoke about our community already providing oversight, which in my opinion still stands true. Upgraded technology to include social media platforms, removal of qualified immunity, and stricter laws have already made it a little bit more difficult to recruit.
Chief, your time is about up.
I just have a little bit more, Mayor, if I would, please. I'd like to finish. I'm almost done. Recruit, retain, and do our jobs effectively. While we understand that things are out of our control, I have a great deal of pride in serving and protecting our community we live in. Let me remind everyone, families of law enforcement officers also live in our community and surrounding communities, and we want nothing more than to provide good quality service. Now, I've said this many times before, and I will continue to say it because it's the truth. I work for the community. I will continue to work for the community, and we will always put the community first. This decision lies in your hands, and I'm confident you will make the right decision for the benefit, betterment of our community. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, how y'all doing today? It's a beautiful day, right? So I'm here a little bit to talk about community engagement. I would like to take a moment to reflect on our journey and how we've made our community engagement a top priority in our department. Over the years, we've worked hard to build stronger connections with our community, and today I'm excited to share how we've evolved in many ways and to be a part of it. Our community engagement began with a simple but important realization. The values of building trust in an open communication between law enforcement and the community. Several community members reached out to us seeking guidance on police work and how to handle calls for service. This opened the door for meaningful conversations and set the stage for relationships to continue to build today. As the need for communication grew, we started collaborating with a variety of local groups. We've participated with several churches. We've, we've participated with several clubs, including the Kiwanis Club, the Rotary Club. We take part of, we take part in all their events and worked, we worked really well with community partnership with childrens, the firstborn program during the summer months to provide guidance and support. One of the most important areas of focus for us have been youth engagement. We are proud to work with local schools to host events like Shop with the Cop, which has been really successful. Our partnership with La Flota Middle School allows us to provide a fun and safe environment for students during our annual Halloween trunk or treat. I'm really proud of our DARE program that Chief Portillo implemented in our agency, and it continues to be an integral part of our outreach, providing fifth grade students in all Silver Schools and Tri-City Schools with important lessons of making positive choices and staying safe. Additionally, during Law Enforcement Week, we always visit the schools to read to the students, engage in meaningful conversations about law enforcement and community safety. We've also been active in organizing and participating in local events like Codes for Kids, Toys for Tots. Initiatives have been huge success, helping ensure children to receive the warmth and joy they deserve during the colder months. Our Coffee with the Cop event continues to foster personal connections with our community members in a casual setting, allowing for open dialogue and trust building. Our local library has also been a fantastic venue for engaging with the community. We've conducted several presentations for both children and adults, offering insight into law enforcement, safety, and crime prevention. These interactions allow us to continue our mission of making law enforcement more approachable and understanding for everyone. That's all I got to say, guys. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Delphina Jimenez. The resolution, and I'm talking about the ordinance and the resolution with the cab. The resolution was replaced with an ordinance bypassing community input and law enforcement collaboration. It seems they are pushing a potentially flawless system, taking away community control and focusing, excuse me, enforcing acceptance. This undermines the try it and buy it approach. On February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, at the council meeting, Sharon Book Walter announced the Citizens Advisory Board members, which included Stan Snyder, a council member. This dual role raises conflict of interest concerns, potentially compromising his impartiality. Stan Snyder should recuse himself from related voting. A council member with integrity, transparency, and accountability should recuse themselves from voting to ensure impartial decisions, making, making and maintaining public trust.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Pete Martinez. I was born and raised here in Silver City, New Mexico, and I would just to say, like to say no to CAB.
Thank you, Mayor Ladner, town council members, town management officials, and the chief of police. My name is Allison Hurst, and I'm a resident of Silver City. Loyal citizens have created an ordinance to form a Citizens Advisory Board in order to foster trust and grow trust between the residents and the police force. I give my full support to ordinance thirteen thirty-five and the creation of a Citizens Advisory Board. I ask for the town's leadership to help foster trust between the citizens and the police department by voting to approve this ordinance for its one-year period.
Greetings, Mayor, council, chief. My name is Paul Leepmay, proud citizen, community, community member, and business owner in Silver City since two thousand ten. I'm grateful to be here today and to share some perspectives, but mostly I'm here to point out very respectfully that things have changed. And what is everybody most fearful of? I had a couple of questions that I've pondered since the last meeting I came to talk about this. I've reached out to the chief of police, Freddie Portillo, Chief Portillo, also Sharon Book Walter, from the Community for Community and Safety Committee, Committee for Community and Safety, as well as an officer who used to work for Silver City PD, who had approached me about a job four years ago before going to work for, as a sheriff's deputy, right here in Grant County. The questions and subsequent conversations I had with all three were full of conviction and shared experiences, and as Mrs. Book Walter called it, our common humanity. My first questions of Chief Portillo were age today. Answer is thirty-seven. Age when you were promoted to chief's position? Thirty-one. Where were you born? Silver City. Mission statement for Silver City PD? You've already heard that. Average age in your department? Thirty-five. Ethnicity breakdown? Eighty percent Hispanic, twenty percent non-Latino? Then I asked him, did policing change after we came out of COVID lockdown? Yes, it did, with liability and police immunity. And to quote Chief Portillo, nobody wants to choose law enforcement as a career. I can only imagine how often you are solicited, chief, to further your law enforcement career in another community. Two more pages of stuff to go through, but I'm limited to three minutes. So with that, I would like to remind the city council here tonight that Mayor Ladner summed this whole thing up as micro-managing the police department. This is our chance to put a stop to this and retain the Silver City Police Department that are probably weighing their employment options right now. Think about that. Look at Santa Clara. Look at Hurley. Las Cruces, Demme, Lordsburg, they're all having problems right now. We need to take this serious. Let's take this to a vote right now for retaining our folks in blue at Silver City Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Good evening, chief. My name is Gabriel Ortega. I am born and raised and have resided in Silver City for over fifty years. As a native of Silver City, I do not see that this advisory board should be approved at all by our town council. We as residents have faith in our police chief to run this, to run our police department to the best of his ability and all, and also have the utmost trust that you, city council, have done your duty to oversee any issues that arise. There should be no reason for a need to have an advisory board that will have, will be micro-managing Silver City Police Department. Bringing in an outside self-serving group of individuals would not only be a slap in the face to you as a council, but to the department as well. I hope that you find it within yourselves to do the right thing and vote against this board. It is not welcome nor wanted by residents such as myself. Thank you for your time and allowing my voice to be heard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I'm here in support of the CAB ordinance, thirteen thirty-five. Please let me know when there's like twenty-five seconds left so I can skip to the end. Thank you. I'm sure there's going to be other people speaking about the need for and benefits of this ordinance as well as against, so I'm going to use my time to address some things I've heard from people who oppose it. The first is that the CAB will let people who don't know how to do the job set law enforcement policy and micromanage, as been mentioned a couple times. This argument misunderstands the ordinance. The policies of the SCPD are determined by the chief, the town manager, and in a broader sense, the town council. Having a CAB would not alter this chain of command in any way. There would be voices added to the conversation, and the CAB's presentations to the council would be public record, but there's no language in the ordinance that says their recommendations must be followed. As to the lack of knowledge part, the CAB would be full of Silver City community members who have chosen to devote a chunk of their time to service, serving the town rather than themselves. Some of its seats have professional requirements. Will they have law enforcement experience? Possibly, though not necessarily. Does every town manager, every town council member, every mayor? What they will have is their own professional experience, their own personal experiences. They'll be able to call on the town manager and police chief for information, advice, and clarification. Furthermore, the manager and chief will select relevant training for CAB members. Other opposition to the CAB has been over issues of confidentiality. The ordinance takes that into account in various ways and keeps the flow of information going through the chief, who is aware of policies, procedures, and even officer safety issues that affect what can be shared. Public records requests regarding the CAB also flow through the SCPD. The CAB will encounter sensitive information, but that is inherent to any kind of third-party outlet for grievances. Members of the CAB are legally bound to confidentiality by the same code of ethics that is already in place in the town. One of the more provocative criticisms I've heard during previous public comment is that the CAB will represent some kind of agenda. This argument also comes from a misunderstanding of the ordinance. The board will have members nominated by each town council member. The ultimate decision of who is on the board is up to the mayor. As we can see from the debate and consideration of this ordinance alone, our councilors and mayor would not appoint a politically homogeneous board. The CAB will represent a diverse set of perspectives reflective of our community and conversation about a specific issue. The result of this kind of conversation tends to be pragmatic rather than ideological. It's been said that this ordinance disrespects the officers who serve our community. It should be noted that structural policy review is not the same as individual performance review. I don't doubt that the overwhelming majority of the time our officers are acting within established policies and practices. The CAB looks at policies and practices, not performance review. I hope I've covered some of the critiques of this ordinance, and they seem to stem from a lack of careful reading. There are far more valid reasons to vote yes than no, so I'm going to name some values and see if everyone here agrees on it, because I don't believe this is divisive.
Your time is up.
All right. I don't believe this is a divisive issue. We all agree on safety, accountability, and transparency. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor, staff, and police officers, chief. Thank you for this moment, a little bit of time to speak to you this afternoon. I don't have, I just have some small notes, and this is going for, against the CAB, the thirteen thirty-five ordinance, which started off as a resolution, now going into Now going into an ordinance, things are changing, becoming wishy-washy here. Where is this really gonna go? You want us to be able to trust? If we truly trust, we have a police department who has a matrix, who has chain of command to follow up that goes into our city manager, then to you. We don't need a CAB, and if it doesn't have binding authority, we're wasting time. Precious time that can weaken our police department, which then means that will be mine and everybody's safety in this community. Think hard about that. Not someone's personal agenda and stuff in the background trying to use the incident of 2016 to get this in the door. We need to be real. You know, as elected officials, this is your job and your responsibility to oversee issues, transparency, that people are talking about. So don't pass the buck to a CAB. They weren't voted in here, that'd be voted by you, not the community. So take your responsibility back and do your job. And I believe there is personal agendas and vendettas against the police department in the background that are not being said and not being brought forth, that are being truly transparent. So I'm asking you to vote against, no, whatever your terminology is, against this CAB. Remember, our safety is most important to every person in this city, if they live here, if they're traveling, if they work here. By weakening this department, now our safety's gonna become an issue, and then now the town's gonna be, have more of a liability than the 2016 incident. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Ashley Castillo. I'm a native of Silver City and would like to express my concern for this new advisory board for the police that is being put forth. I am in disbelief of the lack of support from this communit, community for our local law enforcement. I think that it is a shame that we're trying to tell these officers how to do their already difficult job. These officers have to go through extensive training to be, even become an officer. I don't think that the people who are pushing this agenda are fully aware of what all these officers have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. I think it's a slap in the face to what their job entails. What they need is our support, not someone who has no law enforcement experience or knowledge of the law to tell them how to do their job. It's so easy for us to point out the negative things, but how many of us have stopped to thank any of them, or at least give them a compliment for a job well done? Most of the time, they are understaffed, overworked, and have to pull double shifts to make sure that our town is safe. Even if an officer is on day shift, that doesn't mean that the job ends once they clock out. It's never-ending. To me, this board has no concern for these officers. They're only thinking of how they can make their job harder or impossible. Policemen should only be thinking of making it home safely to their families. I don't think anyone realizes the ties that a lot of these officers have to the community. A number of them have been born and raised here and have deep roots within its community. For example, Chief Portillo has three kids. Him of all people wants a safe community for his kids and for everyone to prosper. I know a lot of our officers have kids and are involved with their sports, churches, or other community organizations. To say they are out of touch with the community is just plain blasphemous. I am truly saddened by this agenda this community has put forth. Policemen put their lives on the line every day to try and help others. The last thing we should be doing is making their lives harder. I, for one, feel safe when I see law enforcement around and have no problem showing my support for them. The SCPD also puts on numerous events for kids and are always looking for ways to strengthen ties with, within Grant County. By putting this advisory board forth, in my opinion, would be a step in the wrong direction. I think there are a lot of ways that we could build bridges between law enforcement and the community. Chief Portillo's door is always open, and I know he already has daily recommendations and complaints that come his way. I don't think we need a whole board to tell him how to handle those complaints. He's been in law enforcement since right out of high school and has had Silver City's best interests at heart always. I think we should have an appreciation board for the police officers that work tirelessly to keep our community safe. We should be building each other up, not tearing one another down. I think we can all do a better job of making the community as a whole better. Last sentence here. Let's find a different approach, one that is not degrading towards law enforcement and support them in protecting our community. And I just wanna say that those who are against it and booing, they still will protect and serve the community no matter what your opinion is. Thank you.
Put your water, Mr. Mayor. Put your water.
Yes.
There are people in this crowd that are making comments while people are speaking and also booing during, when people are clapping. Could we please cut that? If you're not in support, just don't clap. When it's time for you to support your, your thought, then clap. But the comments that you're making outside of when someone's speaking, I can hear them. So if you would please stop.
Kevin Hurst.
Good evening. Thank you to the city council members, the mayor, the department heads, and the staff for creating this space for us to have the opportunity to speak, to voice our opinions about the ordinance thirteen thirty-five. My name is Kevin Hurst, and I'm retired from a twenty-seven-year career after working for state law enfor, state law enforcement agency. I conducted compliance inspections on private and public entities regarding commercial vehicle operations. I had direct contact every day with the public representing my agency. One of the issues I noticed over my career was how the state operated in a reactive way to issues regarding changes in the law enforcement policies and training, rather than being proactive. Most times I was required to have specialized training because a bad incident had occurred involving a citizen's death or mistreatment of someone, someone. Some of the training that conducted was about understanding, being prepared to deal with mental health issues, having the awareness of cultural diversity of our public, and most of the time, the state had to pay out multimillion-dollar lawsuits, and the trainings were part of that legal statement, settlement, excuse me. So I, so let's be proactive rather than reactive. It saves time and money. I've read the, the ordinance and fully support it being approved tonight. It has specifics that address major concerns of the people of Silver City. One specific is the range of expertise in the board member requirements. Another is a clear section on removal and vacancy of board members in that they comply with the town's required code of ethics. And the ordinance clearly states that the board cannot involve themselves in the day-to-day duties of law enforcement officers or disclose any information that is not already in the public record. The duties and powers section has verbiage to promote research by the board to address the changes in our country and whether those changes have an effect within our city. The board will be researching the best support for our law enforcement personnel in education, safety, mental health, and legal liabilities. This will also allow the police department to focus on their, focus their resources on public safety and training as needed, reducing some of their workload. Yes, there are issues about document disclosures of contract agreements and the future hiring of a, of a police chief, but once again, that is not of, anything is not a public record, shall not be disclosed by any board members. The ordinance is not locked forever. There shall be a review of this ordinance with one year, within one year, and it can be modified, or a second ordinance can be enacted to abolish it. In the two years I have been in Silver City, I have been welcomed, welcomed to this community by so many great people, but the common concern I've noted from people is how law enforcement policies and practices nationwide, nationwide, have recently changed and how the federal law enforcement is conducting in this nation and in this state.
Your time is up.
Okay. Anyways, I just, I just wanna say, I hope you will consider this thing, I think it's a win-win. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello and thank you. When I was here, the first time I spoke, I was speaking about the fear in the gay community. There is still a tremendous amount of fear. It is only growing with what's going on, but I want to cha, thank Chief Portillo, because after we spoke for that, Captain Hobbs came to a P flag meeting, young officer David came to another P flag meeting, so he is making a real effort to try to reach out, to try to help with some of that fear, and that's only good. And if this ordinance was going to do any of the things that the people who are against it said it's going to do, I would be against it too, but that's not what it's for. No one in this ordinance, no one who's speaking for it, is trying to say, we know what a policeman's job is. We understand it's stressful. We understand it's difficult. There's no way a civilian could understand what they have to go through. At the same time, with the couple hours of training the police department has, they don't understand what a trained social worker could do, someone who's trained in behavioral issues. They have ten, twenty, thirty years of work, so the police department knows exactly what they can do, and they do a tremendous job. The behavioral people, the social people, they can handle the mental breakdowns. They can handle when someone's excited. They can handle to calm them down. Now, together, you put the police together, you put the social together, you would have a tremendously strong team. This ordinance would not tell the police chief what to do. I have started talking to people who are interested in this ordinance. We have almost a hundred cards here, and I've just started talking to people, and they all want to tell me their story. Some of them are just kind of minor things, some of them are bigger. One of them that struck in my mind is a woman who was trying to report police being overly violent. This was before Chief Portillo came here, and the police chief at that time told her, well, maybe the officer was having a bad day. It is very natural for someone to want to defend their people. They're going to come at it as defending it when someone's in their office, they're excited, they're upset. You automatically want to defend your people. I do it for anything I'm involved in. It's a normal reaction. But if these people who are upset can go to this community, this social advisory group, they can talk to someone there who can calm them down, they can then write the information down, they can give that to the chief, he can read it without being emotionally involved in it, and he can make the best decision. Now, that's very important. It will be given to the chief. The chief will be the one making the decision on what happens. This is not something he's told, there's no oversight to it, and I want people to realize, the public is aware of this issue. They want it. They are not going to handle, are not going to go with the resolution. They are going to demand an ordinance, and it's going to continue. So I would hope that people would get together. This is something that could help the city. That's all this is, is to give people who are intimidated to go into the police department where they're surrounded by guns and black shirts.
Thank you, ma'am.
And have somewhere else safe to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Low.
I just wanna say that I support ordinance thirteen thirty-five and a citizens advisory board.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I wanted to ask you all that what, what are you doing to keep our community and especially downtown safe?
I'm sorry, we can't have a dialogue, okay?
Okay. Well, let me tell you. Actually, you brought up an awareness event, and I think that's a great idea for downtown, that all of you come downtown and see how unsafe it is. So Sunday, it, I'm used to seeing loitering. Uncomfortable, people stumbling, talking to themselves, yelling at people, whatever. But this time, this guy was dangerous, so I had to close early. And I waited for the little girl next door in the store all by herself that didn't wanna close and get in trouble. I had her lock her door until she could call her boss and go home, and I stayed with her. I watched the guy as he broke into two cars. He and my boyfriend, I asked him to come down, 'cause I was worried. So he came down, and he saw him doing two drug deals. So it has not just become loitering, it has become dangerous for us. We have so many activities, like the Hila and, you know, the Blues Fest and the Tour de Hila, all that to get people here, but we're part of that downtown. And I always hear, is it safe to go here? Is it safe to go there? Getting asked for money, all that kind of thing, and people are intimidated. So I would like to have an awareness event and invite all of you, I can get stores for you to stay at. I think you should walk downtown, not just drive by. Just spend some time downtown, see how dangerous it is. So I'd like to clean that up. I have aesthetics, but that's way down on the list. So it's, it's just, it's become unsafe, and, you know, I'd like stuff to happen, you know? I've talked to stores, they'd be open to having security, like, to watch downtown for you to see. It, it's, the noise and ordinance are both from ten PM, the noise and odor ordinance are from ten PM to seven AM. That doesn't help us at all. I've had musicians next to me just trying to make music, and I don't have my music in my store loud enough, and I can't, I can't do it, I can't make it loud enough. So businesses are welcoming you. I can set you up with businesses, no problem. I encourage you all to have a meeting of how you're gonna make it safer for us, and please, tell the shop owners, we're all, I mean, I talk to people and they're like, well, we're afraid to call the cops. Well, nothing ever gets done, so what's the point? I call when I hear someone screaming obscenities. The people that they're actually saying, I'm gonna F-ing cut you, they don't call, because they were like, nothing ever gets done. So without the full support, the police and fire can't do what they can to the best of their ability. So I would appreciate if y'all would get together, kinda figure something out, I'll give you my email, and we can set up who you can go with, and we can spend a couple days. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lori Rogers.
Good evening. It's a gorgeous evening in the land of enchantment. Chief Portillo, members of, of the council, 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 Councilor Conno, Councilor Prince, Mayor Ladner, Councilor Snyder, Councilor Bencomo, and the rest of you, thank you for being here tonight and allowing us to speak. And there are a variety of perspectives represented here tonight regarding the ordinance that's the citizens advisory board, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to speak, that we can come together and respectfully share our thoughts. My name is Lori Rogers, and I was born and raised in Silver City. After graduating from Silver High School, I spent a number of years in Albuquerque. Five years ago, I moved back to Silver City. I have questions as well as concerns about this ordinance. What data was used to demonstrate and determine that there is a need for this ordinance? In addition to the processes already in place for addressing concerns? How much taxpayer money has been spent addressing the possible need for this ordinance? In other words, if you take Mr. Brown's salary and drill it down to an hourly rate and do the same with Chief Portillo's and Mr. Reynolds' salaries, how much money has been spent addressing this proposed ordinance? As a taxpayer, I'm concerned about the amount of money that's been spent, as well as the human resources that have been expended. For example, how much time has Chief Portillo been pulled from his job? What about Mr. Brown and Mr. Reynolds? While it could be argued this is part of their job, it's concerning that they're not able to focus on the most pressing needs in Silver City, as there's already a as there's already a process in place for such. If I may share something, I served twenty-eight years in public education. I was a teacher and served in other roles. And there were times I was pulled from my job duties because of those who believed they knew more than educators as trained professionals. This happens because almost everyone has had an opportunity to go to school and has been in school. This can give them the false belief they know what running a school or teaching in a classroom should look like because of that shared common experience. And of course, input is important and should be considered as public servants. There are processes in place for such. When an inordinate or normate amount of time was spent addressing these concerns, it was a barrier of providing excellent education. Focusing on my number-one job, which was teaching and serving students, I was challenged by the time constraints of having to address these things that didn't follow the proper procedures. While it was part of my job to address concerns, it was still a distraction and took away time and energy from an already difficult job. Now, let's take a look at law enforcement. Those in law enforcement are also trained professionals. However, it differs because we don't have the common experience of being a law enforcement officer or being directly involved with what they deal with on a daily basis, unless you were a law enforcement officer or maybe breaking the law. Of course, input is important and should be considered as public servants. There are processes already in place for such. When there are concerns, there are already processes that can be addressed. I have one more sentence, thank you. Two more sentences. How is it beneficial to add another layer that further bogs down the system? This ordinance would be an additional layer added to a system where financial and human resources must be maximized. There's a place, a procedure already in place. I respectfully ask you to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you for the offer.
Raoul Torrieta?
Thank you. My name is Raoul Torrieta, and this is going to be a halftime, just like March Madness. Don't you guys love March Madness? I want to thank you for having us. I am the president of the Silver City Museum Society. And I have a brief description on the situation that we're dealing with right now. The society has literally taken the high road, keeping this information off the media. We have ran out of road. We've had to break down a relationship. The director, a city employee, has served, has severed a thirty-nine-year relationship with the Silver City Museum Society. It is significant. It is a very, very bad impact to the community, just on the director's behavior. The director, a city employee, with the abuse behavior. It has been noted. This is a serious concern, especially when it happens a few times. Our complaints to the manager and the mayor didn't result in any meaningful change. Now, we're being banned from the museum. In January, the Silver City Museum Society was banned from the museum, which was a huge blow, especially since the society has funded a large amount of an average of two-hundred thousand per year. Being excluded with the contribution that we have done, it feels very unfair. Initially, we faced significant difficulties, accessing our computer system, important files, which led to the delays of operations. After exhausting all avenues, we found it necessary to call a sheriff, the sheriff's office, to help us retrieve the necessary items. While this was unexpected, the challenges that we face, we are now functioning at our best capacity with our operations being managed in a hundred-and-seventy-five-year-old storage shed. Despite these challenges, we remain committed to uphold the responsibilities to the community and to ensure the services that we provide to continue to meet the needs of the society. And it is very difficult and caustic to continue to meet the needs for the museum. Issues of the museum recognition. We have been removed, the Silver City Museum Society, off the mensorean. It is, it has been a partnership and the respect that it seems it's been a breakdown. We have found that we have to take whatever step for the Silver City Museum Society Board feels it's necessary. Our town manager has been missing in action.
Torrieta, your time is up.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say we have ran out of, we have ran out of road. Thank you very much.
Richard Miller? Richard Miller?
I just wanted to express my thanks to the Silver City Police Department. You've got an almost impossible job in today's political and policy environment. Thank you to those city council members who are standing up, saying, "I'll do my job and not create another layer of bureaucracy." You know who you are. Thank you to the city manager. You've got a job to do, and you're going to do it. And we just don't need another layer. And I just wanted to express my support for the police and for the council and the management of the city. No, no CAB, please. Thank you.
Jason Lockett?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. My name is Jason Lockett. I want to take a moment to ask all of you to vote no to the citizens advisory board, especially those of you sitting up there with special interests. A CAB for the, for the police, while intended to foster accountability and community involvement, will create a special agenda that weakens public safety by prioritizing specific interest groups, concerns over the broader community need for effective law enforcement. This can lead to decisions that may undermine police authority, diminish the resources necessary for proactive policing, or divert attention from critical crime prevention, ultimately compromising the safety and security of the community as a whole. Again, vote no to the CAB. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Angela Flanders?
I'm here to talk about a different subject than we've been talking.
Ma'am, could you speak directly into the microphone? Thank you.
I'm here to talk about something that we haven't been talking about, and it's not on your agenda, but I hope that it will be on your agenda sometime in the future. And that is about whether or not we should have dogs on leash on Boston Hill or off leash. And some of the things I'd like you to think about, because I hope this will be coming up in the future, are that dogs tend to be more aggressive and protective of their person on the other end of the leash than dogs that are off leash. We need to train our dogs to walk on leash, and I think it's really important to have them on leash around town and most places inside the city limits. But leash walking doesn't give dogs the kind of exercise that they really need to be healthy. And so I think it would be great if we had a place where they could run and really use up all the energy that they have. Dogs that are on leash, walking in a place like that can be a tripping hazard. And, of course, when dogs are walking around town, they are used to the things that are going on around them, but they can be quite startled up on Boston Hill. People like me, an older person, needs to walk with a hiking stick. And having a hiking stick in one hand and a dog on leash on the other hand is quite difficult and, I think, dangerous. And I don't think we want to discourage older people or handicapped people from using Boston Hill with their dogs. Dog parks, some people say, "Well, take your dog to the dog park", but a dog park, especially our little dog park here in town, doesn't give most dogs, little dogs, yes, but not middle to large-sized dogs enough exercise. And I've included in my notes some reasons why dog parks are not that great, which you can look at later. We have five hundred acres and six entrances to Boston Hill, and I think it's just impossible for us to imagine that we could really afford to be policing that. And one of the rules that I learned when I was raising my kids, one of the cardinal rules is, "Don't make a rule that you can't enforce." And, and I'd also like to say that I have looked for incidences of dogs attacking people on Boston Hill or being a nuisance. And I haven't been able to find any. I know of one personally, but that's one in the twenty-some years that I've been here. So in conclusion, I want to say, "Why punish good dogs for what bad dogs do?" Thanks.
Thank you. Rhonda Van Dran?
I'm sorry. I know, I know more of you than I expected. And I understand.
Rhonda Van Dran, could you speak directly into the microphone and speak to the council?
Yes, sir. I'm so sorry. I know that this is very complicated, and these always are. But, good evening. My name is Rhonda Van Dran. I'm a member, I'm the mother of a law enforcement officer. Like most of those graduating from our academy, he left for, he left the area for greater opportunities. Five minutes is very little time for me to express my concerns regarding the proposed ordinance to provide for an advisory board for our local police department. Driving any of our officers away by increasing their burden is one of my concerns. This is another. And it's posted, it's posted on their wall. And so committing suicide, so the poster says, "Too many cops leave the force by their own hand." Committing suicide is too common among the police officers. Because so many people do this, they have a joke about, "What flavor is your dipping sauce?" It's a hard group they are. I've spoken at length with my son about oversight and advice. This was his answer. It's a video of the murder of Las Cruces Officer Jonah Hernandez. There's narration, and it's, and it's short. I'll skip to when the officer reaches the scene in the officer's vest cam. He spots Silva quickly and walks toward him. At about ten feet, Silva closes the distance. You'll hear the voice of an armed unidentified passerby who stops the killer and then tries to stop the bleeding. Finally, another officer will call for help. It's graphic, and I guess I'm actually grateful that there's no video.
The videos you're about to watch are horrendous. They're exceptionally difficult to see. If I were not required to release them on the Inspection of Public Records Act, I would not. And one thing I want to say on the record is that Officer Hernandez did nothing wrong. It could have happened to any of us, including me. The first video you will see is a surveillance video from the property. It will track Silva as he sees the policing at the intersection, and then moves to the canopy to wait for Officer Hernandez. He deliberately placed himself there to ambush Jonah. The second video is Officer Hernandez's body camera. The video starts when he's at the intersection of Bailey and Amador.
Beer discretion is advised.
How's it going, boss? You been staying here for a while? What's up? Is this your place? Is you the one who called? You're the one who called?
Ma'am, your time is up.
I beg your pardon?
Your time is up.
May I, may I, may I wrap it up really quickly then?
Yes.
So you missed out. You missed out on the screams. You missed out on the blood. You missed out on the people that had to deal with it. Fortunately, there was an armed person and stopped it. We have a capable police chief. Let him choose his priorities, who to work with and when. And those, help them to success, help him to successfully serve those in need.
Brandy, Brandy Howdy?
Hello. If I could be given a twenty-five-second reminder before my time's up, I appreciate it. My name is Brandy Howdy, and I'm a social worker here that serves our community. I've worked with law enforcement. And number one, thank you, Chief Portillo and the Silver City Police Department and Grant County Sheriff's Department. And again, council members as well for giving us the opportunity to have feedback. I am against the CAB. I firmly believe that this is duplication of the processes in place. I believe that the comments about micromanaging and the concerns that have been brought up already are valid and are real. I already know, because I happen not just to be a social worker, but a wife of a police officer, that their job, as you all know, is very dangerous. It's very difficult nowadays, more than ever before. I feel that we already have a difficult time retaining current police officers for the city police department and recruiting. Now, when, when this CAB is being suggested, I hope that you guys understand that who would want to work for a police department that has another layer of bureaucracy, like a CAB? I think to increase relationships with the police department, there is a process in place. There is procedures in place. There's a chain of command for a purpose. I think the only way to strengthen them is to encourage what that process is and be transparent of what it is so that the community members can use it. Why does it need a third-party board to third-party report these serious concerns, if there is any? His door is always open. And, like, they take those all seriously to, to protect and serve the public. And I just think that that should be something that you all consider, that this could be, create more challenges and concerns for, to recruit and retain current officers. I, I also think that due to, due to the increased scrutiny that they already have, they already overly feel scrutinized as it is. They go through academy and training processes. Then they have a length of time where they have to do on the job to, there's, there's such thing as, you know, the academy and what they teach you, but then there's the realities of what committee policing is. I really believe that in reading the ordinance, there were some concerns that I had that they make efforts of who should be on this makeup of the board, but they say, "One position may be a police officer." Well, if it was pro-law enforcement, there should be a minimum, more than one, at least. And why wouldn't we want that perspective on there if it even, even if the CAB did exist? So to me, that's concerning that the language says "may". It's concerning that it doesn't, there's a five-day process of when a complaint is given to the board that it goes to the chief.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay. I'm just going to just finish this little up real quick, okay? So I think that that is concerning. I also think that it's very difficult to understand how these members would not be biased and anti-police. I also feel like it circumments the processes. And I also feel like it will weaken our community's safety. Thank you.
Thank you. George Carr?
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity tonight to address.
As you all know, if this right had been available to the citizens of this community in 2016, the GRT taxes paid in every transaction in Silver City would very likely be much lower. Since 2016, the city has made no proposal or offered any suggestion on how citizens' complaints can be made to somebody other than the chief of police. This ordinance has nothing to do with interfering or changing the manner in which discipline or other personnel manners are handled by the police. It has nothing to do with some form of sinister cabal emanating from supposed outsiders who know nothing about the cultural values of this community. It has nothing to do at all with denigrating the important and difficult work of police officers. And just so that the record is clear here, I've been on several ride-alongs, and I've had the privilege to represent members of law enforcement and to defend them, and they are still my friends. I don't know of any law enforcement officer who claims that every officer in every department is perfect and free from mental distress. In my opinion, it's in the interest of every police agency, of every community in which they serve, to provide an effective means to stop things from getting out of hand. It is well past time for the council to give the citizens the opportunity to express their concerns to someone outside of the police department. In the final analysis, the voters of this community will recognize this is a simple matter of trust and accountability. If the effort of this body is to block any form of constructive criticism of the police, you will not build any form of community trust. Tonight, I ask you to do your jobs in good faith. You don't need to lie about the purpose and effect of this ordinance. You do not need to create chaos and division. Everybody in this community wants transparency and accountability in the city government, young, old, and from every ethnicity. Everyone in this building salutes the flag of New Mexico and perfect friendship among united cultures. You don't need to disparage and insult the motives of anyone because they just didn't have the good faith to grow up here. You simply need to do your jobs tonight in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, what I've noticed is that when someone speaks to an issue, and I'm looking in the audience, and I see somebody who I know is against that issue, you still applaud. I want to thank you for your courtesy to the speakers and to your decorum. I want to, we appreciate that. Next is Daniel Duran Paj.
My name is Daniel Duran Paj. I'm a New Mexico native, I was born in Santa Fe. I will be turning 68 soon, and have lived in Silver City with my partner Mark for three and a half years. We've been together almost 44 years. We love Silver City and would live nowhere else, especially considering the present political climate. We plan to spend the rest of our lives here. That being said, speaking one's mind and taking a strong stand is not always easy, and sometimes you have to fight for it. At last year's Tour de la Hila, I was wearing this T-shirt which reads, "Boycott Israel, Free Palestine." While sitting on the bench at the bus stop near Adobe Springs, I was approached aggressively by an individual who started yelling at me, "You can't wear that T-shirt." Still sitting, I told him to get away from me and that I didn't want to talk to him. He kept yelling in my face, the same thing over and over again. As I tried to stand, he headbutted me and I went down, losing consciousness for a second. By the time I recovered, he had run about 30 or 40 feet north on Bullard. I flung my now-warm cup of coffee at him and missed him by a mile. I was still on my knees, disoriented, while Mark, seeing that I was seemingly okay, took off after the assailant with our dog chopper on leash. At that point, Tim Charles turned around and knocked his phone out of his hand and punched him in the eye. At the same time, I started standing up from a hands-and-knees position. All of a sudden, I felt a large set of powerful arms enveloping me. Thinking he was helping me up, I continued trying to stand. Suddenly, the body grip tightened, and using his upper body strength, he pressed down, and the dual pressure from trying to stand and being pushed down caused me to scream in excruciating pain. Being in a squatting position, he wouldn't let me stand up or go down. All of this time, I was screaming for him to let me go and asking, "What was he doing?" I managed to turn my head, which was bleeding from the headbutt, and say, "You're hurting me, let me go." His response, "You just spit blood in my face, and I can charge you with assault." My first reaction was that he was a cop, and first rule, you don't fight cops. However, I realized that he hadn't identified himself as such and continued to struggle. All of this occurred while I was in extreme pain. He finally let me up. At the same time, Mark kept following the assailant who ran into a building up Bullard Street.
Sir, your time is up.
That was a five minutes?
Pardon?
Was that a five-minute time?
Three minutes.
I thought I had five minutes. This is, I've never spoken on this subject before.
Okay, I misread what you wrote. Sure, go ahead.
The cop showed up and located the suspect. This, I was relieved, thinking that the matter would soon be resolved. It turns out that the second assailant, who was supposed to be a volunteer at the bike race, an EMT on top of that. Upon explaining that the guy talking to two of the cops that assaulted me, one of the officers snapped at me, he was just trying to help. At that point, the officer interviewing me told me that I was being charged with mutual combat, or whatever the legal term is. He said that a witness stated that I had thrown the coffee first before being headbutted. I'm going to run to the end of this, and I'm going to say that if this person that assaulted me, the EMT, is at this event, I will press charges against him. And if he's at this event, me and my friends will start telling the people at the Tour de la Hila that they are in possible danger from the volunteer staff of the Hila. So I would advise this person to not come back to this town, and I would advise the cops to tell him that, because they know who he is, and they won't give me his name.
Thank you. Mark Duran Paj?
I'm the other half. Anyway, so, there were a couple points. I followed Mr. Charles down the street, photographing him, he turns around, slugs me, knocks the hammer out of my hand, and, anyway, so I continued following him at my own peril. I see the police running around the corner, they had been taking a break over at the parking lot there on College, and I followed Mr. Charles right up to the building where he went in, and the police dutifully went in. I said, "He's went that-a-way," and they went in and checked, came back out a minute later and said, "He's not in there," and I said, "Well, come on, let's get him, he's around back, probably going out the back door." Nope, no, he's not there. And I'm like, "Really?" And so I start going around the building, and they go in the building through the front door and bring him out, right away, just like that. And so that was kind of weird. Then by that time, Daniel had managed to get up the street, he's bloody, you know, his lips were cut, his nose was bleeding, and he had come up the street, and this guy is pushing him, like, trying to control him, preventing him from moving down the street, pushing him around, and he's the EMT guy. And we're just like, Daniel said, "I want this guy arrested, too." And the officer said, "Well, we can't arrest him because we didn't witness a crime." So we said, "Okay, so what do we do?" So we said, "You have to come down here and press charges on Monday." And I said, "Okay, this is Saturday, so it'll keep." And I said, "So what about this other guy?" "Oh, he's gone already." And I said, "Well, he's standing right over there." I said, "Well, let's just go and get his information." So I start heading down there, and this guy, "Oh, he's right here." The police officer says, "Let me handle this. You get any closer and I'll have you arrested." And I was like, "Okay, this is interesting." So anyway, so I took his picture, just to be sure, and left. And I got to say that I kept, that night kept us replaying the crappy treatment that we got from the cops. Daniel was a bloody victim, I had been slugged, this guy had done it, and, you know, I know the cops didn't witness it, but, you know, it's just like, okay. So we went in and filed on Monday, and they wouldn't tell us the name of the EMT guy, but it turns out he's from Ruidoso. One of the police officers let it slip that he was an EMT from Ruidoso, so we know that much about him, and we will be there. And if he's there, we will be doing an informational picket right in front of the EMT tent next to Adobe Springs, or wherever it's set up. So I hope I don't see him there, and I hope you tell him to not come to Silver City. I got to say, too, I love Silver City, but after this, and the way the cops treated us, I felt really bad, and I just, I couldn't even look at the cops, like, in the same light, ever again. And I don't think I'll ever call them again. If I need help, I'm not calling the police.
Thank you. Hector Correio?
Good evening, Mayor Council, my name's Hector Correio. I am the police chief for the city of Bayard. I'm here to support the Silver City Police Chief Portillo, because I believe today's decision could have a significant impact on the community that I serve. I strongly oppose the establishment of the proposed community advisory board, as it presents several challenges that could ultimately undermine the effectiveness and integrity of our law enforcement agencies. While the community engagement is important, this advisory group introduces potential risks that may hinder law enforcement operations rather than enhance them. First, the creation of the advisory group with oversight functions could lead to misinformed recommendations that conflict with established policing best practices. Law enforcement is a highly specialized profession requiring years of training and expertise. Subjecting critical decisions to external influence from individuals unfamiliar with the policing tactics, legal procedures, and public safety protocols could result in unattended consequences that jeopardize officer safety and operational efficiency. Second, this group could create an unnecessary layer of bureaucracy, slowing down decision-making processes that require swift and decisive action. Police departments already operate under multiple layers of oversight, including Internal Affairs Division and the New Mexico Law Enforcement Academy Board Division. Adding another advisory group may lead to redundant oversight, diverting valuable resources away from frontline policing and crime prevention efforts. Finally, the presence of an advisory group could diminish officer morale. Law enforcement officers already work under intense scrutiny, and adding yet another external board to evaluate our decisions could contribute to hesitation in critical situations. Officers should feel empowered to do their jobs effectively, not burdened by the fear of undue criticism from individuals who may not fully grasp the complexities of modern-day policing. For these reasons, I urge the town to reconsider the establishment of this advisory board. Instead, I recommend strengthening existing community engagement initiatives within the police department itself, fostering dialogue through structured public forums, and enhancing training programs to address community concerns. A collaborative approach will be far more effective in promoting both public safety and trust in law enforcement. Thank you.
Mylonius Flynn Hawks?
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Mylonius Flynn Hawks, I'm 26 and a resident of Silver City. I stand here today to voice my support for Ordinance 1335, which would establish a citizens' advisory board. After reading the proposed ordinance, I believe having the four designated positions, which are a mental health professional currently working in the community, two social worker professionals currently working and residing in Silver, and the person with a background in public education who is currently working directly with students in Silver, will be a positive thing for this town. With the Hila Regional Medical Center no longer having a behavioral health unit, I believe we need to focus on making sure there are other alternatives to care for the individuals who need it. Police are meant to enforce the law, but we need a wider variety of support for our community, which includes mental health services. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Bookwalter?
Good evening to everyone here, and especially those of you who have come to express your diverse opinions. This room is an embodiment of American democracy itself, and I am grateful to be a part of it. Tonight, the town council will vote on Ordinance 1335, which proposes the formation of a citizens' advisory board to work with the Silver City Police Department. There have been evolving versions of this ordinance, as well as a resolution proposed by the town. For those of you who continue to oppose the ordinance, I'd like to point out a very important difference between it and the town's resolution that may have been missed. Ordinance 1335 contains language that provides a duly-appointed member of the police bargaining unit to meet with the board at guaranteed times. Here's how it goes. Sections 24 through 44, powers and duties. The board and a duly-appointed representative of the police union shall meet the first full week of January and continuing every other month and within that first full week of the month throughout the year to establish open and proactive communication with the rank-and-file members of the Silver City Police Department. Meetings may be canceled, added, or rescheduled upon mutual agreement between the board and union representative for good reason, such as no agenda items to discuss. Although the town insists that the resolution is the better way to go, nowhere in it does it grant access to the rank-and-file representation of the police officers protecting and serving this community. This hadn't occurred to us either, until police union requested it. Not a single member of our committee hesitated to grant this. In fact, we were embarrassed at not having included such an obvious need in our proposal. How can a board or a committee work towards strengthening the relationship between law enforcement and the community, not communicate with those officers who are doing the daily work of law enforcement? This was not a concession. It was a positive recognition of the need to include everyone involved. At each step along the way, in meeting with town officials, whether elected or hired, we conceded every ask they made without compromising the integrity of the proposed board. Still, for all these concessions, the only positive proactive contribution that we received was from the police union itself. Rather than removing language from the ordinance, it added a significant source of input to the board, thus improving its effectiveness. Whether this ordinance passes tonight or not, those of us who have worked on it have been grateful to learn about citizens advisory boards and the politics of law enforcement and town management that so frequently oppose them. Going forward, should we have to resubmit this proposal, it will be better informed by our insight into existing laws and aid- be better informed by our insight into existing laws and agencies and the experience we have gathered along the way. Thank you.
Jennifer Mettles, Mettler.
Hello, Mayor, and council members, and...
Ma'am, could you speak in a microphone and speak to the council?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Council, mayor, officers, code enforcement, town members. I am here because I've had a heck of a month in Silver City. And I'd say if you want to get to know police and code enforcers, work at the Commons and live on Swan Street. That's how I've got to know everybody through the years. I've been here since I was a little kid. I've seen some strange things happen on every side you can imagine. I've worked at the Commons for seven years. I'm the senior program manager there. I manage the gardens, I feed people, I run YCC programs. And in my other life, my other job, we, my family provides affordable housing for seven community members. And it was also raised by radical hippies. So, I'm just gonna say, I've, I never had so much contact with police and code. It wasn't a negative thing, but we just kind of laid low and minded our own business. And Silver City that we are in today has been extremely hard. Over this last month, I've had to call, text, whatever code enforcement. That's Manny Howdy has been involved, Vicky Tony, Thomas Hernandez, from the police, Anthony Flores, Mackenzie Spurgeon, Jonathan Singleton, and another officer that, I didn't get his card, but I have these. I have a lot of cards. So it's been a really weird month. First of all, two members of our youth spray painted personal property, and then they proceeded to hit many places in our community, which isn't that cool. There's other places to do artwork in town. Then a bus parked on Texas Street. And mind you, I was raised by hippies. We did travel in a bus. These individuals cut our commercial fence with, with, I don't know, some electric power tool. They cut it down, so we had to, and they had just been cited by, I think, Manny Howdy for parking there illegally. And aside of the $2,500 damage that they did to our property, where we do house and provide low-income housing, they were dumping feces, they were just kind of doing whatever they wanted. They smashed our cactuses down, and it was getting extremely rough, and I thought, why can't they do something? Well, there's all these rules that they're bound to, and it makes it really hard when you're feeling frightened or stressed, and they say, well, we have to catch them in the act and do these things. Well, they got to catch them in the act the next week, I think, because they were in one of our properties. They had broke in and they were kind of doing whatever they wanted, they were setting up shop. And finally, we had to have detectives and officers there, and they arrested them. I wouldn't have wanted it to end that way, but that's what I needed to have happen, because to take that upon yourself, to damage all that property, I just don't think it's a kind or friendly or peace and love thing to do. So I just want to say thank you to all the code and police officers. This is just a good story about everything that you guys have done for us, working at the Commons. There's been a, you know, we work hard to feed people. We work hard to help the community, and we can't do it without you guys. So, thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilpeople. I'm gonna keep my comments very short. I'm gonna defer to others who are more eloquent than myself. I will say I am in strong favor of the development of this Citizens' Advisory Board, which is not an oversight board. I'm also very heartened to hear that Chief Portillo's office is open all the time to customers coming in. And Chief, expect to see me. I've got something to talk to you about. Thank you all, thank everyone, even in opposing opinions. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
My name is Eddie Flotis, and I'm here as a citizen with 39 and a half years of law enforcement experience. I started my career with Silver City Police Department. I'd never forget where I came from. After about four years, I went to the state police and ultimately retired as a captain here in District 12, which encompasses Grant County. Currently, and for the last 17 years, I've been chief of police at Western New Mexico University. To this day, I still handle calls, whether it's unlocking a door, or larceny, or burglary, so I, I still know what these officers go through. Born and raised in Silver City, and I'm here, most importantly, to ask you to vote no for the Citizens' Advisory Board. From my experience, which is over 39 years, I know that these boards don't often have the people on the board with enough experience, knowledge of operations, procedures, or policies to be an effective committee, especially here in a small city like Silver City. We don't have major problems with our department. I listen to the radio every day. These officers are well-managed, from the manager all the way up to you guys. We're not like Seattle, Oakland, and more closer to home Albuquerque Police Department, who just recently came from under the Department of Justice. We're not like that. But let me tell you this. This board is simply a micromanaging tool that is politically motivated. It's tough to be an officer unless you've been in those shoes or boots and putting your life on the line and making split decisions to save somebody's life or your own, and then get chastised for it after the fact. Nobody wants to do it anymore. It's tough to recruit officers, and this is gonna make it tougher. These officers go through enough with training requirements, procedures, internal affairs, everything to be an officer. Officers don't really want to do their job anymore because they're gonna get sued. Now you're putting another layer of bureaucracy on them. When someone needs an officer, they need it now. They don't care who the officer is, they want that officer now. And that's important. If this passes, we're not gonna have officers to respond. You guys are the chain of command. There's a chain of command that needs to be followed. You guys are the Citizens' Advisory Board. You guys are elected. People come to you with complaints, and it goes down the chain. It goes from you to the mayor, mayor to the city manager, city manager to the chief, chief to the officers. That's how an effective and efficient department is run. You have the people in place. Look around. We don't have major problems. I strongly oppose you. I strongly ask you to oppose this board. You're elected, don't let somebody else do your job. You're the Citizens' Advisory Board, and we have a great chief and a great city manager and a great Silver City Police Department. Thank you for your time.
Order, please. PJ Sturbin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Councilors, Town Staff, Chief. I, I'm here to speak to Ordinance 1335, and like the chief and like a few people in the room, I'm very much against this CAB, Citizens' Advisory Board. I've seen them in action around the country, and although the intent is to create better trust and accountability, perversely, the reverse happens. And I'd like to speak specifically to this ordinance, 1335. I think the ordinance is written is a bit pretentious, maybe a little naive. I think it's adding a bureaucracy for a small town like Silver City. Again, I'm sorry, I should have introduced myself. Peter Sturbin, I live on Chihuahua Hill. And thirdly, I believe this ordinance, as it's written, is very anti-police. So, I don't think its aspirations or expectations really meet the needs for Silver City. I have, and I'd like to speak specifically to the reasons and justifications of this Community Advisory Board, as, as written in Article IV. I'd like to speak to the composition of the board, and I'd like to speak to the powers and duties. Under the reasons and justifications, that would be on my first page, and it would be the fourth whereas. This, this Citizens' Advisory Board creates the most efficient avenue for feedback and The most efficient, this is an ordinance for the Town of Silver City. Is that what you will vote for and agree to? It is, I, this, I would, I would point out that it's probably not the most efficient avenue. I would point out that probably the most efficient avenue is for dialogue between citizens and the town councillor and the chief. Number two.
Sir, your time is up.
Oh, I'd be, I'd be happy, I, I will pass my comments to the town clerk for your review. Thank you very much for the opportunity to again speak, and please vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to remind the speakers again to turn your comments into the clerk so he can put them in a minutes. Next is Jana Mintz.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Councilmembers, staff and enforcement. I'm Jana Mintz. I'm a resident of the Silver Heights neighborhood and a constituent in Councillor Ben Comos District. I'm a property owner and a small business owner. I'm quoting some language from the opening to the proposed ordinance, 1335, that's important to me. Whereas, "A safe community is one that is based on trust between law enforcement and citizens, and this trust is strengthened by respect for feedback and a greater openness to receive and consider grievances on the part of the town." And whereas, "Fiscal responsibility demands mitigating potential liabilities and the increased insurance premiums that come with them, and whereas, this is best achieved with input from multiple and diverse perspectives." I am in favor of this ordinance, and I encourage you to vote for it. I desire to live in a safe community in which feedback from the public and a wide array of points of view are seen as assets, not threats. I would like to see the town mitigate future potential liabilities and insurance premiums that may arise, for which town residents will be responsible. Our gross receipts tax is significantly higher than any other municipality in the county, and I envision the Community Advisory Board being an influence that may prevent future increases due to town liabilities. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a little taller than that, I guess. I'm, I'm gonna avoid some of the things that I had written down, but I was born and raised here, made my way back about five years ago, was, or I am, a licensed attorney in another state, have litigated for close to 30 years, including claims for defamation and employment. And I lost a case, this was on my list, I lost a case at the trial court, took an appeal, I lost, took an appeal to the Supreme Court and won, and it was about how to interpret a statute. And people, we all read this ordinance, and we, we have different views on what it means, but I can tell you that no one knows what it means until a judge tells you what it means. In my mind, the statute or the ordinance creates an agency relationship between the city and the board. And what that means is the city will be liable for anything this board does. So, what will happen if the board issues a report like it's supposed to, and it's also supposed to make findings, and those are supposed to be public records? If that report is inaccurate and results in defamation to an officer's reputation, results in an office, damaging an officer's either current or future employment prospects, the city could be liable for that. So I want you guys to think about that. I know we can't have a dialogue, but before you vote on it, I would also like perhaps one of the council people to tell us, if the city has submitted the proposed ordinance to the insurance carrier, whoever the city uses as their insurance carrier, and, and gotten a written assurance from the insurance carrier, that if the board does something wrong and that there are damages that the city has to pay, written assurances from the insurance company that it'll be covered under the insurance policy. I'm glad, I'm glad that PFLAG is here. I support PFLAG. I support the local chapter financially. And I'm glad to hear what happened when they wanted to speak to an officer. I, I, I only know of the one meeting. I'm glad that there were two meetings that an officer appeared at and spoke with a PFLAG group. That's how, that's how it should work. You should work in bringing the citizens together and the police together, not injecting another layer in between the two and keeping the two apart. So what I would ask is for the council to, I think this ordinance does more harm than good. I would ask that the council put the ordinance aside for a year, continue working on developing relationships directly between the police and, and the citizens, and don't go down the path that the ordinance will take you, which I think will expose the city to additional legal liability.
Thank you, sir. Janet Wallet Ortiz.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you all for all the good that you do for our city. Tonight, you have the opportunity to do one more good, to vote yes on the NOI 1335, to finally establish a legal Citizens' Advisory Board. My name is Janet Wallet Ortiz, and I've lived in Silver City for over 40 years. I want to publicly thank those who, for the last four years, have volunteered their hard work, hours of research and discussion, to get us to this point. Thanks to Councillor Snyder for stepping up and representing his constituents, which is his job. We all know that frustration still exists, even after past traumatic experiences, and I'm not just saying the one in 2016. There's also one in 2023. There's also ongoing frustrations, as we evidenced here tonight, and was evidenced by the young lady who spoke passionately last month during public comment about her civil rights being violated here. She said she was going to pursue her complaint with the Attorney General. I wonder what that was about? This might have been an opportunity for a CAB to hear her concerns. And if you've ever been to a domestic violence rema- And if you've ever been to a domestic violence remembrance ceremony, you know that it is important to remember the history, and it is important to examine what happened, so that going forward, you don't make the same mistakes. So you have a choice before you tonight. A vote no is to cave to the falsehoods and wrong information being rumored, and continue down the same myopic path of simply hoping for the best, and simply hoping that there's no other catastrophe that will ever happen again in Silver City. Or you can vote yes, and take us down a new path that allows insight, not oversight, by a, by a local citizens board, and that yes includes law enforcement representation. Doing something different that further protects your constituents and our own police department from direct or inadvertent harm by the bad apples, as former Councilor Ray has mentioned. So in summary, if you vote no, then you're voting and you're siding with a recent county official who publicly said, "I think that they should just let law enforcement do whatever," quote, and then be managed by the town manager. Well, we already know from past history what has happened as a result of that. And another county official just said, with regards to issues that are prevalent in larger cities, "Here in Silver City, we don't have issues." Think about those statements, both former police officers. Let law enforcement do whatever? And here in Silver City, we don't have issues? Excuse me. This is the very mentality that gave rise to the need for a legally established, unbiased, respected CAB. If you vote to approve, be aware that you are supporting a citizenry, including police officers and their families, who simply want to know that there are independent eyes watching and monitoring any issues of concern, to help protect both the police and residents. Almost done. Chief Portillo himself has been quoted as saying that he would work with a CAB if that was established. Finally, CABs have been successful in similar places like Socorro, New Mexico. They are not to be feared if everyone is doing their job faithfully and with professionalism. After all, we pay the taxes that pay the police salaries, right? And we also pay the taxes that pay for the lawsuits, right? It's important that we have a CAB.
Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
I can't read the last name, but the first name is Lorna, L-O-R-N-A. Are you still here?
You can take my time off because I'll be brief. It takes me a while.
And we have, we have two more public inputs after this.
Mayor Ladner, Councilwoman Connel, as friends, colleagues, and elected representatives, I thank you. I thank you very much for getting this, us all, your constituents, together, and the city hall wouldn't have worked tonight, would it? We are working with the county to do that. I think that is something all of us in Silver are proud of. I'm also grateful for the fact that, full disclosure, I've been working on this for several years as a member of ACLU, and I was very pleased to go to the detention center and find out some of the things that law enforcement is doing right. And I've never had any trouble with the cops myself, but hey, I'm old. But one thing I found out when I was there was that we are working a program of social work and the disabled, and in the detention center, we now have an opportunity to get help from our local establishment. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I support, of course, the adoption tonight. I don't think you're all there, but I hope you will get there soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, and everyone. My name is Andy Payne, I live in Silver City. And the first thing I want to say is that the Citizens Advisory Board is not an attack on the police. It's an attempt by some very well-intentioned, thoughtful citizens to reach out and meet with the police and bond with them, to help them. Now, there's a segment in this town that has trust issues with the police department. I am not one of them. I hear many, many good things. As a matter of fact, what I hear about Chief Portillo, is he's got so much support, does such a good job, he's likely to be hired away by some other police department. And I think we have to be proactive. The next person that occupies his chair may not be as trustworthy or as honorable as he is. So I think we should be proactive and think ahead about these things. The Citizens Advisory Board, if given the chance, will increase the trust and communication between police and help unite our community, help unite some, bring in some of those people that do have trust issues. The police department and the city councils should be viewing this advisory committee as a positive step forward and not as a threat. I don't see the dichotomy there. So please support this advisory board and give it a chance. Give it a chance. Thank you.
Next is Wendy Graves, and after her, I've had a request for a 10-minute courtesy break, and we will have a motion to that, and I'd like to encourage everybody to be back in their seats in 10 minutes so that we can start. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Wendy Graves, and I live in Silver City. I have spoken regarding the CAB proposal at a previous meeting, so I will be brief. I feel safe in Silver City, and I thank the police, their leadership, and the city leadership for that. A careful reading of this ordinance does not show any criticism of the police. The ordinance does not call for oversight, but rather calls for an advisory role. I perceive no political advantage in this, in this, no political motivation in this. Please pass the Citizens Advisory Board as an ordinance. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for a 10-minute courtesy break?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move for a 10-minute break.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will have a 10-minute...